Yes. Anything else?
Great, just waiting for the numbers.
Can I say one thing?
Please.
So the, this, there will be a little bit more. Waiting until we had final invoices, but there's a couple of stragglers coming in and we decided to just get this done and then there will be a few more then.
Can I just, can you repeat real quick how much is coming out of the facility paying trust?
Um, work, it will close it and the last balance I had, which you know, it can change in the.
Yes, yeah, I do have an updated.
Okay, so what I had was 173, 791, 37.
Yeah, so I've got 174, 931.
Okay, say it again.
1,700, I'm sorry, 1,074, 931, and 48 cents.
So we'll put in for.
To close all of them.
Sure.
Yes.
If I may, um, so to member of the public, I would say that you stick with the numbers as previously stated. Leave the paving account active.
Yeah.
When sunny weather comes, we can squirrel away money because that eventually it'll have to be sealed, it'll have to be.
Yeah.
encoded, you know, the whole bit. So to, to leave a small amount and have the funds there, I think would probably be best practice.
And we did publish that number and soon as she said that it occurred to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that exact number in the papers, we should.
Yep, that's fine. And if there are still straggler invoices, then.
There wouldn't, I don't think there will, the paving's done.
Okay, got it.
We only had one roofing invoice, maybe one fire panel invoice.
And we did talk about adding more money to that trust fund in a future year.
For maintenance of the.
For maintenance of the payment, so yeah, we will do that.
Anything else? Okay, we closed the public hearing.
And went to make motions for both, for those amounts.
Okay, I will make the motion, so I have the paper in front of me.
Should I make separate?
Okay, I will make a motion to withdraw 851,186 dollars and 56 cents from the School Facilities Repair and Improvement Trust Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then I will make a motion to withdraw 173,791 dollars and 37 cents from the School Facility Paving Trust Fund.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. All right, that's it. You missed the public hearing. That's fine. Okay, now we will have public comments.
Good evening, Kevin Vermaut, Karen Vermaut. My apologies, I didn't identify myself during the public hearing, I, I should have. Biggest reason I came here tonight is to thank you for delivering school choice, expanded school choice for our high school student. Like the voters want it, clearly like the families of eighth grade students. And we really, really do appreciate that. We know it's a very heavy lift. What I will say is, um, my understanding is that there's talk about JCA is the policy applying to change in high school. JCA is a policy that's really developed and intended for the one school district. So JCA still apply to all kids at DCS, right? This is our, our only option pre-K through eight. JCA is not intended, but designed for a modularity of multiple schools where you have a choice. And so the, the board should consider a new policy for high school students. And I would encourage you to make that policy as liberal as possible, as flexible as possible for students and families. I sent you an email on this, you can attach that to the, to the minutes of like, you know, the, the only, the only time I could see it being a problem is if a child wanted to transfer at such a time where he'd end up paying double tuition, right? And unless it's urgent, I mean, if it's an urgent thing, then you just do it, right? Because it's best interest of the child. But if it's not urgent, then you know, you find that clean, right? And that's what I would encourage you to do. That's, I think that's what families want. That I think would be in the best spirit. A public speaker during the last meeting sort of intimated that, that maybe an apology is, is owed by the pro-school-choice crowd, particularly the people that have been very vocal at your meetings, myself certainly would. And, and I, and they didn't use the word apology, that's where they were going at. And I don't, I don't think that it's warranted, I'll tell you why. From an observer on the outside, right? It's very okay to us because it's negotiations, it's non-public meetings, so we have no way of knowing what's actually going on. And if I had a nickel for every time I was told, well, where were you when we were having these discussions? Where were you when we were leading up to this? I, I can be comfortably retired today. And that's how I learned the lesson. That you have to show up often, you have to show up and be vocal, and you have to push. If that's what you want, that's what you have to do, you have to push. And that's what we were doing. We are simply trying to make sure that our message was, was out in front and, and not washing out. And, and that's really, that's really why we pushed so hard is because of some reason. So again, uh, thank you very much for giving us extended school choice. You did the, you did the right thing. Uh, you did a great, great possible. One last thing, if you could indulge me. It's interesting how things turn because I was against Minio's contracts presentation because people didn't get to see itself. And you chose not to take that advice and hindsight, glad you didn't. My heart, heart says you probably should have laid it over so people could have had input. But the guilty part of me says, well, I got my ways of keeping my shut and walk away. Uh, so I know it wasn't easy, it was two hours, it was a nail-biter, and I finally got to watch it. I was very tense. But you did a great job and I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
So, um, I'm gonna put my trustee of the funds hat on for a minute. Um, I didn't get to attend last meeting, but I was listening in. It sounds like, um, you may have to take or expend funds from the special ed trust. And I just want to remind you, and I do have copies for you guys. Dude, in order to expend, it has to be voted by the legislative body, and it also requires a public hearing for extending funds. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that. I'll pass up copies of these. So just keep that in mind as you're kind of moving forward this year. Obviously, as you're discussing warrants and, and all that. And I have another thing. So I was listening to the NBC meeting last night. I was at the winter concert with my kiddos, so I did not get to come. But I wanted to discuss a little bit about budgeting and, and how everything is going on that front. Um, I know that we can't make these drastic changes to the budget, and I know that it's a little hard to see from a different perspective, but it was mentioned at the last, last school board meeting, Ellen and Nate kind of discussed it a little bit about the possibility of merging classes, and it came up again last night. So I just kind of wanted to give my take on that as well. I really do think it would be beneficial in the long run. I think you're, when you're looking at, you know, increasing class size, you're also looking at providing more aides to that classroom or certified specialists to that classroom in some aspect. I think with the younger grades, which was mostly discussed last night, um, you do have a lot of, you know, different needs that are being met, whether they're finding gross motor skill development and, you know, they're all on different areas with that, or if it's speech therapy or so forth and so on. But Amber stated last night that adding additional students could disrupt the learning environment for the rest of the class. And I think that's what classes are kind of created upon, right? So we're kind of thinking about what students need, the extra help, and where they're gonna be most beneficial, who they're gonna be most beneficial under. Um, I think the board and could work closely with administration and sort of changing the structure and the process a little bit. I think if you got ahead of it, um, we're, we're talking about changes in special ed. So we have broader spectrum for ADHD and autism now, right? So we're talking about possibly needing to expand the class, but providing that aid ahead of time, okay? Because you really don't know what's coming. Not all children have gone to our preschool, maybe not all have been tested, so you really don't know what you're dealing with. And again, special ed's kind of a big question mark, and we don't know. Um, I think it really could be beneficial in those grades to kind of merge them and and to hopefully, hopefully we can get somewhere with that. But I do recommend that it may be easier in fifth grade because we're kind of, we have a better grasp on, on possibly being able to increase those class sizes based off of the special ed needs at that age. And I know we can fluctuate, but I just wanted to get that out there. And again, I thank you very much for the contract. I wasn't here, so I didn't get to thank you last time.
Thank you. Other public comments?
The institute Pleasant Hill wrote, um, throughout the discussion on expanded high school choice, I have voiced my concern about the impact it will have on DCS. Even before the vote was taken and certainly after I began to hear rumblings of this fear. Now on to the next hard step, finding where we can make some cuts of DCS. It's going to be uncomfortable for a while, but I think we can dial back the wants list and proceed with a reasonable needs list. These are things I've heard and read. So we add 800,000 to one on a one line, one line item. And where do we look to make cuts? DCS. I'm in favor of reviewing a budget. I recently have been reviewing my own household budget to accommodate recent and future tax increases. At the last meeting, it was said that Mrs. Wivi and Mr. Reeves had found 80,000-ish, which could help flip the current upcoming budget below the default budget. Um, some of it was going to be covered with grant monies, but when those monies are gone, we need to hold for more grant money or we do away with those items or we put them back in the budget. So to me, it looks like a short-term fix. I heard throughout the process, we spent 19,000 per student at DCS, so why spend less on our high school students? But now that we have expanded choice, why do DCS students need to give things up? There's talk and looking into how special ed services are delivered. We have no say on a special ed services of our high school students. So again, it's back on DCS students. Over $2 million of our sped budget is on out of district placements. We can't touch that. Hundreds of thousands, I don't have the exact number, so I won't, but it's at least 300,000 is on sped transportation. Can't do anything about that. Personally, I feel contracted services will be more expensive. It'll be interesting to see. But more than cost, how will providing these services privately affect the communication between the provider and classroom teachers? As well as scheduling the benefits the student needs so they're still feeling part of their own classroom community. I'll be interested to hear what the few redundant program positions are. Do people feel we should be cutting the PE, music and arts program? Literacy and math support positions, which by providing some needed support to students could help bridge that gap that student is having. In my opinion, the cuts necessary to have, have an impact on reducing the overall budget due to increasing one line item will have a huge impact on students at DCS, a concern I have said all along. I hope to be proven wrong.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Who's hiding? Okay. Agenda review. Um, I do need to add two items under immediate business. One of which was brought to my attention late last week and was discussed at the course of our meeting. So we're gonna add D solar lease. And then we're going to add a letter E for high school transfers. Um, so the board can have a preliminary discussion about that.
Please, absolutely.
I don't know that we need to add it as an item because it would just be informational, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we had the updates on the audits and where they're at and then put that to the drive. So if anyone's interested in looking at that.
We can also discuss that at our next business meeting. We get the board updates. But if anyone wants to discuss anything, certainly. Okay, so we'll move on to media business. Fiscal year 24 update.
Didn't change much from the last time. Right now, um, the shortfall is 315,218.
Okay. Now we are talking about warrant articles. So Patty has, um, provided draft warrant articles in the package.
So I updated, um, with the professional contract that was ratified, I put the cost items in, it's, the formatting's a little wonky, but, um, so that's number two. And number one, Amber put in the new budget number and defaults as well as the tax impact.
So, David? Yeah, so we need, should clarify because we haven't discussed this. He, as you know, put, sent our budget over to the NBC, but we needed to change it. And the summary of the changes, it was provided because we wanted to account for students indicated that they were going to, that they had interest in transfer from Concord to around, or students who are not currently in district who indicated they want to join a program. So we've updated those budget numbers, which of course necessitated the bottom line being amended. Amber also, um, realized during the course of the NBC meeting that we should have had three buses in the default high school budget. We only had two in the default and two in the operating, but it should have been two in the operating, three in the default. Because there were three in the default last year. And there's a contract for three. And we have, um, there's a summary sheet too that I handed out that explains all of that, um, as well as the documents, corresponding documents that were updated. So if you're looking at your warrant articles and thinking, this number is their print, that is why. Okay, so warrant articles.
Do you guys have any questions about the budget?
So number one is the operating budget. That is, um, the standard, the standard warrant.
So, um, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it says the tax rate will be 19.39 per thousand. That means if you have a house that's worth 500,000, it's going to be a 10,000 9,000 increase in taxes. That number rate?
1939, the estimated rate?
Yeah. If that's per thousand, so you have a house that's worth 500,000, that's 500 times 20.
Yep.
That's
10,000.
An increase of $10,000.
Not an increase, a total.
That was your year total.
Oh, okay, our tax rate. See, that's good. That just means I just misunderstood that.
$2.11 increase?
Yes.
Is your $1,000.
Okay.
Ish.
Got it. That makes sense. Yeah.
Yes.
It's me.
That's your.
But looking at it this way, because it's saying it's going to be an increase. It's not going to say your tax rate.
It says the new.
The new estimated tax rate. I, I read it wrong.
Which is a result in the 211 increase.
Okay, yeah, all right. So it was just me reading it wrong. All right, because I was kind of like.
No, but it's just gotta be.
But it is a $10,000 increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah.
At this point, because the default is.
So this is a new, kind of a new way of putting it, because we usually just said, but it was, like, it's going to increase your taxes like a dollar per thousand.
It's, it's always done based on.
Really?
This is the same, and it's always done.
And then two is the collective bargaining agreement.
So I put the cost items in. I did finish today. I took all my notes from the negotiations and I did start doing a redlined version of the current agreement so that people would see the, the changes between the two. I sent that out to our negotiators and the two negotiators for the paras, just asking to make sure that I captured everything correctly and didn't miss anything or misrepresent. Um, and then I will get that out so that people have a chance to look at that at that time.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
We need to move these tonight from a season six standpoint, date wise.
The warrant articles. You can.
No, you don't.
I don't think you don't have to go on today.
Or in January.
Yeah, I think our first meeting is on the third. Number three is just, um, shall we, authorization to convene a government, the governing body for a special meeting. Yes.
Number two. But is it supposed to be the Bureau of Education Association? Or is it supposed to be, um, to be par professionals?
Oh, yeah, good catch.
That wasn't mine.
Whatever, cause good catch. Thank you. Yes, you probably copy and pasted from the last. That negotiation. Thank you. I'll fix that, Amber. Actually fix that. Um, and so number three is basically if number two fails, we'll have to sort of go back to the drawing board, but we still need to figure out a new contract for the paras. We'd have to, um, call a special meeting. Okay, and then four is shall we raise and appropriate $150,000 to replace the Special Education Trust Fund? And that would be from, from the signed financial. Then we have a second one to raise and appropriate $150,000 from taxes, just because we are not confident about how much money we surplus, if any, we will have at the end of this fiscal year.
Two people.
Yes.
If, if there's a surplus at the end of this year and there's enough to cover that 150 and it passes, does create a situation where we may not allow us to retain any funds either.
Correct.
So we would deplete our ability to retain funds as well. It's very, it'd be tight no matter what.
The, the out of placement, one that we're paying for this year, that's so much, I mean, are we, is that going to continue for, it's going to continue for three more years? High school.
Right, we're able to properly budget for known cases.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering about. Right, yes, that was the answer I'm looking for. Yeah, I was trying to say that without.
Known cases are budgeted for and defaulted.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks. Yeah, so this is just for something all of a sudden it comes up, yes.
It's for the unknown needed.
See around, like, or happen, yeah, yeah.
The known, the now known.
Yes. Does anyone have any comments about four or five?
My question would just be, is, are we comfortable with those amounts? Or do we want to adjust the amounts maybe a little bit one way or another? Maybe, my thought would be maybe to 100 and 200.
100 from?
200 to raise and appropriate, just so that if there is by chance a little bit of something left, we maybe still have something left to retain as well. Surely not a hill I want to die on, it's just a food for thought.
I don't understand your reasoning. Can you explain that again?
So, as opposed to doing, if the target's 300,000 for that fund, as opposed to doing 150, 150, knowing that there is less likely to be a cert, five gallons.
I see what you're saying. So you're increasing the tax because you're afraid you won't get it from the surplus, I got it. Okay. But we are, I mean, I think the reason we came up with this too, is we didn't want to raise taxes that much, so that's, yeah.
It's kind of figuring out the best avenue to do it.
Yeah, right. I'm also thinking when people read this, they may not get the two. Hey, we, I just said yes to this. It's the exact same thing, second one, not realizing the difference.
So the only other option, and I think we talked, I mean, is to just make it one article to say to it. Fun balance of the remaining.
If you.
But then you.
That's guaranteed, no surplus.
Or you're basically getting.
And you're taking a gamble, but if it fails, you've lost both, whereas if you have it separated.
That, that 312,000 dollar number doesn't include the 200 and something, canage that would go back in at the end of this year. So.
So when you get to the end, you'll, if you're still short, and I mean, it's, we're halfway through, but money does get freed up.
Right.
Some people will be in a better spot, but if you need to take funds from someplace else at the end, you can choose to do special ed trust or you put your retainage.
Retainage back, right. But I mean, there is a 200-ish thousand dollar retainage.
Yep, then if you don't use it, it comes back.
We can then supplant in to help offset that. That retainage ends up being like your last line of defense. And typically what we've, in most years, it's been a couple of off years, is we put it back and take it right back out. But in last year's money, you take out this year's money. So, it's just a food for thought.
I don't have any, I'm sort of agnostic, honestly.
I think I prefer the way it is, so it's less increased to taxes, even though I know you take it again. I mean, what, what would it be per thousand if we let it up to two?
So, uh, the 800, 780K is a dollar per thousand, so 800 is 2,000, 25 cents per thousand, roughly, 24, 25 cents.
I think point 18 looks like much better than point 25.
Now, the state of things.
I'm fine with it either way. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. Makes you think about it, but I don't have strong feelings about it, to be honest, so.
It's not a hill I'm willing to fight forward.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fair. I think I like keeping it.
I prefer, I prefer it this way too.
Yeah.
Okay, so number six.
So before you read this, is, I just read about the easement agreement at the state of.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the second.
That's what I just wanted.
That's what I added for whatever.
All right, because I was getting, when I was reading this, I'm kind of like, this is just about the school.
Number six is potentially to authorize us to do it.
Yes, right. This language was not written for Deerfield. It was stolen from another district, so it may need to be modified a little bit, but this is the gist of what the language.
So I agree with putting this in there, but I would want Dean to.
Yes, he hasn't reviewed anything yet.
Yes.
This is just the enable, what would enable us to.
He wrote this, I think, last year for Allenstown, but we just took the language because it will be probably very similar for you. And if you want to keep it in, then we will send, as soon as you have an idea of what you want for your warrant, we'll send it to him.
And my understanding is we can't enter into a power purchase without this because it's a loss.
It's a loss, whether there's dollars associated with it or not.
Right.
Because it's like a big contract.
Same, because it's like a big contract.
All right.
This is what enables the board to do so.
Any questions about that?
No. Okay. Um, number seven is the Warren article about submitting all of the three contracts to the Department of Education, um, to have them be our rule of record, or whatever phrase people would like to use for that. Um. What is, I received this from Attorney Graham, I, I explained what we were trying to accomplish, and this is the draft language that he sent along, and, um, we'll review it again for us.
What is the, um, the la- the last sentence, the part that says, including the adoption of minors?
Minor
Amendment to the minor, yeah. Minor amendments to the agreements, okay, so that's just saying that you can make minor.
Yes.
I, I, when I read that, I'm thinking minors?
I'm actually, I totally take It's probably, I'm gonna assume it's a taco.
All right. Good.
Okay, anyone questions about that one?
So just what do we do if that gets voted down?
So if that gets voted down, we just, we, we won't be able to submit any of them
So they won't be school records, but we could still have the agreements
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay. Number eight, um, this is
Why is this coming up again, I was curious, I mean
So this is really coming up again because the Board of Selectmen placed it on their warrant.
So we have to put it on ours?
We have to.
We don't have to, but, and, and I suspect it will fail, but
It just seems like it's, I mean, it was just last year, so it's
It was, but if the community determined that they wanted to revert from SB two back to a traditional town meeting, ideally, it would be nice if both the school district and the town were on the same and sequencing should be together. Is it going to pass? Probably not. However, it's a yes or no, and people can vote any way they want, and there's no harm in asking.
Except that I feel it's, it's like saying we didn't listen to you and we're going to ask you again. I don't know, it's just
Keep asking.
Yeah, let's just keep asking until we maybe get the answer we want, but, um, if we were not to have it on here and say the town had it on and it passed, does that mean then that our stuff would all be voted on and not part of a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so, we really probably do need to have it on there if the town has it on.
It, it, it seems practical if the town was to go away from SB two for both sides
Yeah.
For our town
Yeah, it makes sense to do.
To do it together.
Yeah.
Is it going to pass?
No.
Probably not. Do, is there, uh, people in this community that think town meeting is a better way to
Oh, yeah.
Conduct the affairs of the community? Sure. Does it hurt to ask? No. Does it cost any money to ask? No. Is it, is there a harm? No. So, let the people vote.
I think the only, yeah, the only harm is I feel like you're just sort of not good at listening to what people said the year before, but that's okay. I'm okay with keeping it.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would feel that way if the Board of Selectmen hadn't done it, like, I wouldn't have
Right, proposed.
Right, I just, for that reason, but like, I feel like there should be some consistency, yeah.
I'm okay with consistency, I just agree, I would not put it on here.
Okay. Um, number nine. Um, so the law changed allowing retention of up to five percent instead of two point five, so, um, this is just for your consideration, if you want to ask the voters to have a warrant, five percent set aside, you can certainly do that, um, you don't And even if it's, even if you have up to five percent, you don't have to retain five percent, so like we could
Also can't retain what you don't have.
Well, right, but like, you know, if we had seven percent, let's say, we could as a board decide to retain two percent and return five percent to the town or something.
As your calculation is made and you have a sheet that tells you you could retain up to this much, or has conversation about, which they want to keep aside and the rest goes And it just got voted down, we just feedback
It's true.
There's no change. And, and where we've seen these, these more drastic swings, the ability to retain a little bit more may be beneficial in future years.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I see that, because you can get into trust funds and get things done, but anyway, that's okay.
Well, no, the retainer just isn't impacted.
That's separate from trust funds.
Retainer is just, it's that last line of insurance, if you have a
Basically a savings account.
Yeah, if you have an eight hundred thousand dollar sur- fund balance at the end of the year, and you can retain up to four hundred K, can't spend the four hundred K unless you've completely depleted your budget, but it, there is an extra four hundred thousand dollars there. And, I mean, we're at the point now where we need one and a half in a month, a half million a month. So four hundred K is about a week's worth of actions when you boil it down, now granted, there's a bunch of variation there, but in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's one and a half million a month to virtual.
The, I would just point out as well that when the, um, the new rule was passed, it also expanded a little bit to allow for emergency expenditures. So if you had, like, your subject fail, is that considered an emergency expenditure, you could before you deplete your budget?
Yes.
Um, I think it's a good idea, we can see if people want to do it.
And I don't think we floated this one yet.
No, we, you did the two and a half virtually, but we never put the five
Five, let that bump down.
And the two and a half does not allow for emergency expenditures from today?
The new rule that passed does allow for emergency expenditure, so even
It used to be, you just, you had to have absolutely drained everything, and then you could use it again.
Again, if you don't fully deplete your accounts, the money goes back into
Yes. Okay. Number ten is shall we free a capital reserve fund, uh, for the purpose of unanticipated high school tuition costs? Um, I know we talked about this as an idea, if there's, you know, a new family who moves in and has four kids going to high school, you know, that's now close to eighty thousand dollars, do we want to have a trust fund for sort of unanticipated
Unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted, correct.
Word.
Yes. This language, again, we'd like to borrow to save money, so this was a, um, an article that Barrington had put on when they went to their three schools of choice. Um, and I think, um, the superintendent, I think they only had twice since they put it in, but that was precisely the reason that they did.
You may have it at a certain amount, like the, the town has their highway trust fund for winter road maintenance, there's a, a cap number on it, so that it never, they never funded to more than two fifty maybe, I don't know, Kevin probably is the only one in here that would remember that, but I think it's two fifty or one fifty. Highway department has for Which also, I don't know if you set it up with worth putting language in to say, have to add a certain dollar amount.
Why?
So if you have two hundred K there, you know that you have the ability to absorb ten unanticipated students.
Yeah.
That's probably a safe gamble on any given year.
Oh, yeah.
But then, if you had to dip into it and say you drew, uh, like in the case of the highway department, you had to draw, say, sixty thousand dollars out of it, you could then set your warrant article up to receive it up to two hundred thousand dollars, but not just a way the town set, so it didn't become just this runaway thing, it was just enough to
I see.
You know, flatline expenses, maybe during snow season, maybe it's worth, again, it's one idea, so
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I also don't know that it's like super necessary, I, I mean, speaking for the current board, I don't think we would inflate it on purpose, just for funsies, but I guess I can speak for future boards. Um.
So what's the amount you're thinking of, if you're saying ten students, two hundred thousand, is that what you're
It's, it's, it's an arbitrary number, but I mean, that could be the number, ten students, I mean, since, since the passage of that contract today, there was how many students that we had some homeschool students, some students returning to
And private school kids.
Private school kids, so I mean, you
What's the, what, yeah, what was the I mean, that, that may change
Yeah, I think it, I think it got up to seven.
So I mean, that was a hundred and, it's a hundred and forty, seven transfers back into
Seven, yes.
On our
Not currently
Seven, seven, seven students became students, I mean, there's a hundred and forty thousand there, but
Yeah, but that's leaving you enough for any homeschool kids, because it would be homeschool.
Yeah, it was a mix of, you know, school charter.
Well, I think a lot of the private and charter, that may not happen anymore, because parents know it's available, this is the first year, so they trans, like, oh, I can send my kid to this school because I like this school, I can take him out of my private school, like, I don't know if that's, it's going to happen in the future, but
We, like, as a board can't, we don't have a good pulse on
Who knows, kids are
Yeah, we have no idea, like, next year, we don't know what seventh graders are, are at Turner schools or homeschooled, so like, we could go through this whole budget exercise, and then in January, people are going
I get that with you graders, I'm just saying right now, you're having a lot of transfers that are like sophomores, students
Sure.
Private schools, I don't think that's going to happen in the future.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if they were transferring, I guess they were transferring from all grade levels.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But I think, I think that's probably ten is a good number, ten students.
But, but then my concern, I guess, with putting a cap on is that, that's the tuition now. What about in ten years, the tuition is not going to be twenty ten, I would venture to guess. So, do we, are we limiting ourselves, or in ten years, it's only now?
That's Right, it's an arbitrary thing, it's just a food for thought.
And it's probably not a good idea to do a cap when we don't really know, if we've been doing it for three, four years, and then we realize, oh, we can put a cap on it, but we don't really know, right?
Cap, I think, comes to
It is at the creation.
Oh, you only do it at the creation.
You may be able to amend it down the road. Does it require sixty percent for passage, because it's a new fund, correct?
No, majority.
Majority? I thought funds required sixty
I think when you change it, if you want to change the intent or the purpose, it's two thirds.
It's only a majority of the pass.
I would say, um, I, I don't know that I would put a cap on it. Yeah, I mean, I just, it's hard for me to imagine a board just like shoving money in there arbitrarily.
I think from a, I, I think, my thought with the cap is you're showing the community there's
Yeah.
There's a hard stop somewhere. Because right now it's eight hundred thousand dollars, and then it's nine hundred thousand dollars, or now we're at a million, if it's, well, we're pushing a million with the addition of students. So then, there's another two hundred thousand dollars here when they go to the Warren article, and, uh, you know, you start telling it all up and it's climbing quickly. I don't even know if this is the year to do it, but
Well, that's another question.
Just, is it
I think this is the year to do it, it's on people's minds about the high school.
Do we put money in it? And what, what method?
Well, you really, if you intend to put money in it
Right.
I mean, you could create it, it could pass with creation, if you did it out of, out of a fund balance, it could still be created, and seeded. But you have to have a dollar in it no matter what, so if the first article passes and you don't have enough money for it from that
Oh, you're talking about two separate articles, to, one just to establish a
No, so you could establish this with the money coming out of
From surplus.
From surplus, but because it's a second surplus article, if you don't have enough money
I understand.
Put the dollar in it to create, you need something
Nothing's going to happen. But it, so if we did create two Warren articles like the, like the other one before, what if we just asked to raise just to start twenty thousand from the public?
And fund it next year?
If you send
With taxation?
With taxation, right, and then have this Warren article, like, if it, if it's surplus, you know, a certain amount from the surplus.
I think, I think you're complicating it by putting too many
Yeah, I think it can
Good articles. I think it just gets to be one, I guess ultimately what I would get, if you're going to ask for it, you should ask for it from taxation. And whatever you guys want for your amount. But
We could just do ten kids.
I Two hundred thousand?
I'm, I'm thinking about first, let's just start with one eighty five.
Just to get
Two hundred K is approximately twenty-four, twenty-five cents.
So maybe a hundred
Again.
I'm really happy that people reached out in time for certain purposes, I think, you know
And then, but there could
But there could be more.
There could be ten more that haven't reached out to you as well.
Community awareness has been great that those people did, did out and reach out, but you're right, we don't know
Both of their students. It could be ten, it could be twenty more. And if there is, and the budget's already done, it's coming out of DCS as well.
Yes. There's paper in somewhere.
We should go, yes, pay.
Which is the only reason to have a, a higher number. And if it doesn't pass, yeah.
So if the number doesn't need to be determined tonight, as long as the language is good, you can plug a number in the next meeting if you want.
If you need to think about it. Yeah, you, I mean, you have it right now, the way it's written, it's coming from the unsecured fund balance.
Right, we just copy and pasted, so you can do whatever you Take the draft down there for you.
So in an effort for keeping things moving, I would, I would change our ten to, from taxation, and I I'm going to say three hundred K. And my reasoning for that is there may still be another number of students waiting in the ones. But that's just to get the conversation.
Yeah, I think that's too much.
Yeah, I think it's probably too much to get it passed.
Just to get the conversation.
I totally get it, and I totally, in a perfect world, if I, if I anticipated a lot of surplus, I probably would fund it to that level. But seeing where we are with our fiscal year update, seeing how much we've already added to the tuition line, I just
Well, is, is it fair to say, okay, you've had seven, right? Let's say we get seven more, that's double, so why don't we make it a hundred and forty? That's saying, what if we get double what you've already gotten? That's
I think I'm fine with that.
That's, I think, a reasonable estimate, that's doubling what you've already heard.
Our money would be available for next year's tuition if it
Right, so that's saying that there, well, that, I guess that's saying then that we got seven this year, that we might get seven next year, same amount.
Well, it would actually be, you, you could get, if it passes in March, you could still absorb the cost of seven students.
Right, yeah, because we know
For next year's budgeting, you could draw it off of that. And then moving forward, in the event you end up with projecting, if you start projecting surpluses, you'd have the ability to add funding to it from your fund balance.
What are your thoughts, Sam? Um, I think a hundred and forty makes sense, I was just, I was honestly thinking of a way to just keep it super duper low, just to open just to open the Yeah, I hear you, I just, I don't know that there's a purpose of opening it with nothing in it. Like, if it's, it wouldn't be all that different than it failing, and then we just have to try again next year.
Opening with nothing doesn't help you at all.
Right.
If you're going to need it, you're going to need it, and it's not going to be one of those things, you're going to need lightly, you're going to need twenty, forty, sixty, you're going to need it in multiples of twenty K.
Well, and that's, and that's what I was thinking, like, you know, is there a way that we could just do twenty-four or sixty, like, a low, low number, but you know, if that doesn't make sense to cover enough possible transfers, then forty is still pretty low. Doesn't feel good, but I think the social media presence has actually really helped, because I think there's been a lot of community awareness, so I think we probably have a good jump on anybody that was like you said, we don't, we don't have any students
Right.
Or like, new families who
Fifty-nine?
There could be five more.
And it does allow us for new families moving in, so, yeah.
That's true, any move-ins.
Right. Which, how many houses are being built right now on here, Bill?
Something built, not a whole lot on the market at the moment. Live on the busiest road in town.
Okay. Any other, um, so what are we doing?
So what are we doing?
Adding one forty?
One forty, from taxation. You need a motion on that, or?
I can just keep them in draft if you're not ready to vote, um, but I do need to know sort of order.
Well, like So for now, it's
As I say, the order doesn't, this year's irrelevant.
Make that better, bring it to you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, now we will do my budget presentation. So I have about twelve caveats to this presentation, which will become clear shortly. Um, I made this presentation, the rest of the board has not even seen it, so everyone's in for a show. Um, my intent in creating this presentation is for people to be able to visualize what our budget is made of. So obviously you look at our, at our total number and people have not a good sense of what that, um, how that, what's in that budget. Um, you know, we obviously have the detailed budget with, I think, a hundred and seventy five line items, so it's not always clear to people sort of what the budget is made of. Um, I, I took the time to try to categorize them myself. I think we could probably, if I gave each of you um, the assignment to categorize all the budget lines, we would probably all come up with a different number. Uh, but I did the best that I was able to, to sort of categorize them and put them in to this presentation just for the purpose of getting people um, to be able to visualize what's in the budget.
Kendra, I'll do the clicky click for you if you want.
Oh, you can do it from there?
Well, like, no, I'll go there.
I was like, wow.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I still wiggle my nose. Kind of like winking.
Actually, can't you just tap, Kendra, you could stand there.
Oh, yeah, you can.
Tap the.
Okay, we'll see.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Didn't do anything.
Definitely.
I think when you pull it up as a presentation like that, it doesn't lie to do that.
So all the magic is.
Um.
I'll just do this. This is, this work is a PowerPoint through the computer. I don't think you can use that feature.
Okay.
Well, it sounded good.
It did. Okay, okay. So the, the school board submitted a budget to the NBC. Um, the eighteen thousand, seven ninety one, four sixty eight is the revised number that we gave to the NBC at the meeting last night. Um, so the difference between our proposed budget and the, um, default budget from last year is two million, uh, forty four thousand, eight fifty seven. The default budget is seventy seven thousand above the proposed operating budget. Now, another caveat is that the NBC last night added in seventy four thousand-ish to add a third bus for high school. So this will be about three thousand dollars, but this is based on what we gave to the NBC. So as a reminder, the NBC can add or remove funds from the budget before it's presented to the voters at delivery session.
When does that typically happen?
I have the calendar in here. Important dates for everyone to mark their calendars. So these are the categories that I came up with that made most sense in my brain. Um, so of our budget, our total budget, forty seven percent of that is teachers, DCF staff, salary and benefits. Um, the high school tuition line makes up approximately twenty percent of our budget, special ed, services makes, and ESOL and guidance makes up eighteen percent, transportation makes up eight percent, administration, three percent, and then building maintenance. And then curriculum, moderate, co-curricular and tech all combined make up two percent and food services less than one percent.
And ask a question.
Yeah.
So you said the Fed is the services, so the staff, the Fed staff is in the.
Is in the blue.
Okay.
Yeah, so I combine all the staff, so all of our teachers, all of our administrative staff, all of our, anyone who works here, their salaries and benefits are in the blue. Um, salaries by position types, so if people are curious, you know, regular teachers or special ed teachers versus admin, um, this sort of breaks that down.
By dollars.
By dollars, yes. Um, this is by like line items in the budget. Um, so regular teachers make up sixty one percent, special ed seventeen percent, and then goes much down from there.
And co-curricular, that's like sports and clubs?
Yeah, exactly. So what accounts for the budget increase? Yes.
The pair alignment you have there for the two percent?
Yeah.
Are those the pairs we have assigned to the kindergarten? Because the special education pairs make up the special educations, that's a lot of the pairs are tied to special ed.
Five, I think five.
So that's those five, regular classroom aides.
Um, I don't know. So however it is in the budgets, I just took the budget line items. I don't know if it's broken up in our budget by.
They're in two different sections.
They're in two different sections. Yeah, so if it was in the special ed section.
Then it's, it's.
Then it's.
So the fund.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, the budget increase, so the two million dollar budget increase, this is what makes up that amount. So the largest chunk of that increase is special ed, um, ESOL and guidance. Um, the largest of that, obviously, it's special ed, ESOL and guidance did not make up a substantial part of that. Um, high school increase made, the high school increase made up thirty one percent of our total budget increase. And the teachers, staff, salaries, benefits made up sixteen percent. That is largely related to the CBA that was approved last year. Um, transportation is four percent and food service is three percent, and then the other ones are two or one percent of budget increase. Um, and then we get a lot of questions about special ed costs, so, um, this is probably confusing, so I'll try to explain it. So special ed placements currently makes up roughly fifty percent, well, forty eight percent. Almost half of our special ed budget. Um, special placements are private placements for students with unique needs that can't be met at DCS. It also includes high school special ed placements. That is.
Outside of Concord, you mean?
No.
No. Any, so all high school costs, okay.
Because that's technically out of our district. That makes sense.
Right.
Um, our DCF staff, so that's teachers, case managers, paras, occupational therapists, speech, language pathologists make up twenty five percent of the special education costs, contracted services, like PT, parent support, that's not at DCS. Behavioral specialists, school psychologists, vision, hearing and SAU admin services makes up thirteen percent of the special education budget. Transportation makes up thirteen percent, and I broke it down to K through eight and nine through twelve and summer, in case people are interested. And the summer program makes up one percent of our total special education budget and supplies and, uh, equipment makes up less than one percent.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And you may not be able to answer it. How many private placements do we have for students that are outside of?
Yes, I can't answer that. I don't know.
It's not a vast.
Um, so, other budget information, all of our budgets and budget backup information is on the SAU website. Uh, for people who haven't visited it, it's under the budget and financial information section. Um, and it also has some budget history. I think it goes back to twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. The NBC public hearing date is January ninth, so I would encourage anyone to come.
That is another meeting on the second before that, right?
Correct.
The second may not occur. We may just meet the, the Saturday after.
Oh, because of the two groups that are.
Largely because we're still gonna be looking for our hardworking information from you guys who haven't decided until the Wednesday after the.
No, that's fine. No, that's okay.
That's probably.
Okay, so.
The chairman will send out a notice pretty soon.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Um, but the NBC public hearing is a good opportunity for people to come, weigh in on the school budget or the town budget, um, before the NBC votes on the budget. Um, school deliberative session, February tenth, you are required to be there, put it in your calendar, um, and then voting day. I think that's it. Does anyone have questions? I'm mostly just doing this so I can put it on.
Really nice job.
Our Facebook or website so that people can peruse at their leisure if they're, they're interested.
It's fantastic.
That's a, nice job.
Cool.
I wonder if you have so many newsletters.
I was just saying, at my work, everything is a slide deck. They're like, send me a deck on this, send me, so I'm just like constantly playing.
Definitely the PowerPoint.
Together. So this is no different.
Down, I wear on the.
So are you gonna put that, uh, the?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, man.
Yes, I mean, when, when I blog into Facebook. Yeah, I mean, I probably will keep it as this, because this was the budget that we gave to the NBC. Um, I'll note it that they added a bus back in. But, but we, the NBC is not formally boding. They haven't moved the budget yet, so it's theoretically up, but.
The NBC should move the budget on that. Like it would have been on the second if they.
Right. Potentially this. Um, okay, so I'm adding D to discuss a solar lease and, yes, thank you, Mr. Um, this sort of came out of left field for me. I received an email last week with a proposed lease agreement um, for a solar project at Stage Road. And then, um, I had, I had proposed that we discuss it as a board in January, but then the Board of Selectmen discussed it at their meeting on Monday, so I wanted to bring it up for discussion here. Um, I know that when we were discussing our goals earlier this year, we had talked about whether we wanted to think about the Stage Road property and what we wanted to do with the Stage Road property. Um, so to me, this feels very, um, out of left field. And I, I didn't get any information about it until I just received this lease agreement. Um, so no, I don't know this company. Yeah.
So I was, I texted Kendra during the selectman's meeting, I was watching it on whatever platform it was. And I text her, I said, we need your, you may need to look at this because it sounds like they're, I don't know what their plan was, and it wasn't till after the whole discussion. The selectman Barry, I think, mentioned in the meeting that, by the way, we can't do anything with Stage Road, it's ours. Which is true. Um, I think in a nutshell, the town is, is, is looking for green energy opportunities, right? Which is probably a positive thing. Um, and this company was looking to have the town sign a letter of intent. And if you read the letter of intent, it blocks the town from discussing, looking, reviewing, talking about anything else. So I think ultimately, my, my comments to Kendra were, I think, um, you know, she should respond on behalf of the board. My thoughts, Kendra should respond on behalf of the board that although the board is certainly interested in and, and, and loves the idea of pursuing green energy opportunities, um, we need the opportunity to do any due diligence on properties that are, you know, the responsibility of the school district. Um, and the town, I don't know if they were intending to sign the letter of intent.
Do not know.
Oh, it sounded like it got delayed until the next meeting, but it sounds like they may sign a letter of intent. And I don't know if the letter of intent has overarching authority over the State Hill property or not, but my thought process when I asked Kendra to at least discuss this tonight was for the board to have a brief discussion to say town, please don't sign the letter of intent. By the school until the school has an opportunity to do its due diligence on whatever you are discussing.
Is this, oh, do you mind if I ask a question?
Is this a long-term lease?
Yeah, it's twenty five years.
Twenty five.
So it needs to go.
Would have to get.
There's a whole bunch of stuff, there's a whole bunch of due diligence that we would have to do.
And, and I don't even know, like, we as a board haven't even decided that that's how we want to use this property.
And we have to go back and check the Warren article that acquired the property to see if the property could be used that way. There's just a lot of unknown. So I think my, my thought process is we as a board should reply to the Board of Selectmen that says something along the lines of, yes, green energy is a good idea and we support that, but not here until we can have these discussions and catch up and determine what makes sense.
I think, I think we could also get help from the Energy Committee to find some of that stuff. What's the original Warren article? I mean, I'm sure they'd be willing to do it. I, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity, uh, but I have questions, like, you know, you're paying, they're paying a lease rate of ten thousand five hundred annuals per megawatt. Well, I mean, that, I would, I don't know what the megawatts would be for that, but it's.
So.
Five megawatts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so part of, part of what I left out of this is that this company presented to the Board of Selectmen mostly about putting solar on our property.
Yeah, so they should, they should present to us.
Right. And I think I, you know, as part of our, um, due diligence, obviously, we've decided this is something we've been, are interested in pursuing, but I would not feel comfortable unless we put it out for bidding, I would assume.
So that, in listening to the previous Board of Selectmen meetings, there was discussions about that, and it was very, I don't know what process they used. There was talk at one, in one of the meetings about, well, they've been working on this for six years, but I think they being the Energy Committee. And at some point, it sounds like the board maybe asked the Energy Committee, we don't know anything, right? I mean, at the end of the day, we don't know anything, and I don't know if this is tied to the Community Power Project the Energy Committee is, is doing or not. All I know is like, I was listening to the meeting and I heard the Stage Road property and I heard school in the background and I kind of went, paused and backed it up a little bit and texted Kendra and then she mentioned, I got an email earlier.
Oh, yeah, I did get an email about that, but I wasn't even gonna talk about it until January because.
So I, I.
Things to do.
I think we just need to say something to the Board of Selectmen along the lines of, we need sufficient opportunity to review this and please don't sign anything on behalf of the school district that obligates the school to something.
Or restrict the school. I don't know that it would be valid.
Well, I don't know if it can.
They signed it.
I don't know if they can, but it certainly is one of those things, I'm sure Kendra can speak to this, if the Board of Selectmen signs a letter of intent with this energy companies and the Stage Road property is listed on it. Whether or not they can or they can't, it's gonna cost money to figure out.
Right, correct.
Right? I mean, at the end of the day, that's what's gonna happen, is we're gonna spend money to figure it out. So rather just not put ourselves in that situation.
And I don't know what their letter of intent says. We got a letter of intent. I assume the Board of Selectmen got their own, but I don't know.
In the meeting?
It's no idea.
Sound like the letter of intent was differentiated between the school and the town, because his presentation was facility at the transfer station and a facility on Stage Road, and the letter of intent was allowing them to start pursuing tie-ins to the grid. But it didn't say tie-ins for Brown Road into the grid, it just said tie-ins to the grid. So it sounded as if the letter of intent may have been inclusive of the Stage Road property. I also know.
Yeah. I'm a very.
I heard some stuff from one of the selectmen that they were talking about pursuing this and putting a Warren article in authorizing the town. He, they, they floated the idea of putting in a Warren article, authorize the town to take the school's land for solar field. I said, well, that sounds wrong on every level. But again, I think we just need to say something to the Board of Selectmen, say, hey.
Sure.
Hit the brakes, throw the anchor.
It's not a no, but like, we have not had the opportunity to like explore this.
I think it's a great idea, but there's, there are a lot of questions. And I, like, for instance, okay, who gets the lease rate? Okay, who gets that money? Secondly, they said there would be a reduction in cost of electricity. It wasn't clear to me, is it town owned?
Well, and that's part of, and if a solar, if we get a solar array on the roof here.
Right.
That, that covers ninety percent of our utilization anyway, what happens?
Well, we're a different electric utility anyway, so they, they were talking, it would be ever source because it's a tiny.
Because that particular site would feed back into.
Right.
So I mean, this.
It wouldn't affect us that way, but it's just maybe.
Because they're also saying on here that some of it's gonna affect your, your co-op.
Right. Too many questions, not enough answers, and certainly.
I didn't see that part.
No opportunity to review any of it.
No.
And until, like I said, I think it was Selectman Barry that said, well, we need to, like, it's the school's land, so we can't do anything with it, but that was after the whole conversation was. I heard him say that. I don't know if you watched.
They were talking about presenting at the school and educational stuff and I was like, what, what's happening in this meeting?
Throw the anchor. Somebody told. Throw the anchor. Somebody toss the anchor.
I think it's a really good idea, and I don't want to be negative about it. This is really something that we should be doing.
I, I fully support.
But we may need to, like, I don't, I don't know if I like the idea of just going with one company and not looking at other companies.
I also, like, I like the idea, yes, but I also think we have an obligation to at least have a public hearing to hear what people want to do with that property.
We would definitely have to do that, yeah. And like you said, we have to look at the original Warren article when we bought the property. If it said, if it said it's specifically for the building of a high school, then we would have to change a Warren article about, I mean, there's a lot that needs to be.
There's years worth of work. There's, there's a solid year worth of work on our end.
For sure. No, I have no interest in pursuing this for this.
So I would, I would ask, I don't know if you need it as a motion, but I would ask that we ask Kendra in a letter to the Select Board, asking them, please to refrain on taking any action that pertains to the school district property until we've had a chance to complete our.
Also think, I think maybe we need to contact the Energy Committee too and say, look, you know, I mean, we'd like to work with you on this, but we didn't know anything about it. I mean, that Warren article, we were supposed to work together.
Yeah.
So I, like, Errol said something to me last night about us. I haven't seen anything about it. And then I read it today. It was. I knew nothing about it.
So do we need a motion on that, or can you do it with, you can do it with consensus?
Consensus, I think it's fine.
Sure. But I just don't want to be real negative.
No, 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 no.
Don't want to be negative, because I think this is awesome.
Me?
I'm not being negative about it. I just want to make sure that.
I hear you, I hear you. And you're right, all the, you know. These have to be corralled, I started. It needs to be done. This is too, this is too, we don't, there's too many questions with this.
It's too yesterday.
It just feels like that we, the board doesn't get a say in, like, how the property is used, which is, seems crazy to me. Right? That feels like.
And I'm okay with it. It can use for solar. Like, I think that's a great way to use it, but we gotta make sure we can, in fact, use it that way. And I want to make sure we're getting something back from it. But it's our property. But I think they've been working on it, but again, I mean, it's.
There's been scuttlebutt.
We're all volunteers.
There's been scuttlebutt about putting solar there. We've talked about it.
The Energy Committee has talked about it for a while.
I don't think it's a foreign idea.
Really not out of left. It's just coming with such a, and I think probably they, they ended up talking to a company and said, hey, we can do it. And they gave like, boom, boom, it probably happened.
Like, hey, sign this, so you can't talk to anybody else. Real quick.
I don't think anybody is trying to pull one over fast or anything like that. I think it probably just was. That's my, my two cents.
Yes, I will send a letter.
Okay. You'll throw the anchor.
Yes.
I've been thinking about joining the Energy Committee too, so do that.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Used to be on it.
For the solar lease. Okay, then E that I added is high school transfers.
So I, as I mentioned, I had um several families reach out who um are either currently homeschooling, sending to private schools, sending to charter, asking me about um how they're attending our high schools. Uh, I'm, I've kind of put things off because we haven't really had that conversation. Um, I, my intention was to let them know that after July first, they could start and choose one of our high schools. I don't think there's anything that prohibits that. Um, I did get a request for a transfer during this school year that I, my intention would need to say the choice starts still up July first when the agreement. And then they, they would. Right. That was my intention. I didn't want to respond or maybe.
Unless they want to go to Concord.
Right.
Because Concord, we have.
Concord's our contract right now.
Yeah.
Until the end of the, this year.
I would agree with that.
And then, um, and then I also ironically had already made a note about, yeah, I don't know if it's board policy, probably makes sense to have it somewhere, um, of a notification deadline like October fifteenth, if you want to come on board. And that way, we don't, we can budget for it for the next year and, you know, finding ways to get word out. And, and then to follow up too, um, policy JCA was mentioned. That's the legal right of a, of a family. So if something is happening to their child, wherever they are, and they're in our community, and they need to come forward, they need to come forward under that policy and ask for reassignment, whoever they are. And that's interest, yeah. So there are, that's an option open to them um at any time.
We should probably though, shouldn't we like, write a policy about how we do this and.
And then tell them they have to stay and.
Right.
And really what that policy needs to entail is the triggering for the, it needs to tie back to the contracts and the triggering for when we've made, when we're committed to full payment.
Yeah.
With any given district. And you just kind of probably need to go to the earliest date and say, okay, if the earliest date is October fifteenth, well, then any changes or any requests for reassignment would have to be.
Yes.
Prior to the date, otherwise JCA would be, because we can't, you certainly can't afford to pay for high school twice.
Well, it's also not just paying for high school twice. I mean, the other schools have mentioned concerns about staffing too. If we have kids.
From us getting the number of students, yeah.
Right, that they may not be prepared to house those students.
And I know that's why it felt, I think that's why it felt a little rushed this year. And we were trying to get those agreements done, because our eighth graders were very anxious. Families were very anxious and just want, you know, the schools wanted to know, like, how many kids are coming? And we're starting our registration and we want to make sure your kids are in from the get-go, so.
But as it pertains to this year, Concord is our high school until the end.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I also wanted to bring up too, because I think um the, the letter that Ms. Whitty that you sent, said that once they pick something, they have to be there for four years, but I think we had talked about just a year. They have to write out the year and then they can transfer.
I think we.
Or maybe that's something we need to discuss and put in a policy.
That was part of it, that we, we need to discuss what the method would be if they chose to go to blank school and then, you know, year it did work out and how, you know, how do they transfer? And do they just have choice at the end of each year? How, we, we would need to discuss that as well. I think right now, I have enough information as well. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page that I can help people through. And then goes, and I've, I've asked people, they, you know, or thanked them for being patient and said, we're working through all of these things that are coming up. Um, so I think anything for the future that's like, well, if I go here and then I change my mind, it, you know, we need to write a policy for all of those things.
And how do we go about doing that? Writing the policy? We.
Sample policy out there that exists. That's what I was gonna say, is a, a school that has choi- choice may.
Look into it. I, I mean, we could try what? We can, we can try to contact them, okay?
They should have their policies on their board.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, all right, all right. Didn't even think about that.
Has it made it to your part of town yet?
Actually, very technol- technologically savvy.
I always ask is if the internet has made it to your part of town.
I know that um the only personal example I have or experience I have is um I've had students ask when they've chosen Pinkerton from Hookset, and then they've come and said, well, we, it's not working there. Can we come to Pepperd Academy? And I sort of direct them back to the SAU and wait for authorization from the superintendent for them to say, yes, this is okay for the student to transfer. So I don't know what the process is on their end, but it doesn't seem overly difficult.
But in that direction, it's, you're right. PA is less than PA.
They, well, Hookset was doing the top loss. They still are.
Yeah, sure.
All right. Also, Concord, where are we on the contract?
Still waiting, still later.
Um, the last word I got yesterday was, we're getting back to you really soon. I can't imagine there's an issue because we, the last couple of things we were working on in the draft were addressed, so I.
Well, they meet once a month and they, yeah, yeah, so.
I don't know the holiday, what that's doing to them.
Yeah, mine should go till June.
Anything else?
I, I have something that's not on the agenda, but I just want to ask where it should go. I've been hearing a lot of things like ideas coming up from the Budget Committee and I, and it was interesting to me to look at the class size stuff. Um, when can we start talking about some of that? Is that put it on the agenda for next? Because I think it's definitely a good time to talk about some of the things that have been brought up.
I totally agree with you, and I actually talked about it about this today. Like, sort of the timing of when we should.
Yeah, because like, for instance, looking at some of the class size, like, I know this is a year where we're losing a teacher, so if we were to change something, we wouldn't actually trip anybody. Just sort of some thoughts on that.
Well, the budget will be approved for.
It's not, I'm not even thinking about it.
So my thought was to begin discussions about that kind of stuff and look at optimizing things um after Warren articles.
Yeah.
And all this.
I don't want to wait too long. The reason I'm bringing it up is because I know that teacher contracts go out at the beginning of April.
But that's for next year, which will already have been budgeted for.
Yeah, but we can still save money. I mean, the things that we save money on, even if it's budgeted for. I just think there's an opportunity and I don't want to miss that, so I don't want to wait too late. And maybe I'm completely in left base, but I think it's worth a conversation.
Yeah, I would say um just timing-wise and thinking about deliberative session coming up and Warren articles and things like that, I would say.
I just don't want to wait too late.
What if we just start like mid-March?
Uh, well, I was gonna say, yeah. Then do we wait till after the elections, so that new board members come on? So do we start those at first board meeting in March or whatever, second board?
That actually could tie into your goals for next year as well.
That's true.
Becomes goals, new board members, goals. You've got a high school down with, so now you free up some bandwidth for the board next year.
What can we prepare that would help you with your conversations? Would you like just a staff roster and then what everyone's assignment is?
Yeah, I just, I guess, can I just be blunt about some of this?
I, I would not. Because it's not on the agenda. I don't know that.
I just feel that what my concern is, is a timely concern. And I don't want to wait until it's too late. I don't want to wait until Kristen has done all her assignments and um contracts have gone out. I don't want to wait till then. That's my concern. And then once we have the conversation, I might be completely satisfied, not want to do what I'm thinking about. So, but I really I need to have that conversation.
As long as we have a little bit of time to prep for the conversation and tell us what, what information you'd like to have, you would like from us or like from Mrs. Whitty, we can try to gather some information for you. Or if you just want to put it on for an open conversation, understanding we might not have all the information you ask.
Yeah, I think, I think you would have the information if that was an open conversation.
Okay. What is comfortable for you?
For me, the sooner rather than later, but I know we're dealing with all the budget stuff, so.
I mean, we can certainly have a preliminary discussion.
Yeah, because it might, it might like go away, my concern.
And is. I'm just trying to remember last year, like, if we had full meetings, January, February.
Once, once you dispose of the budget.
Right.
You get a moment, a, a moment to breathe a little bit.
Yeah.
So your middle meeting in January.
Right.
Would likely be, you're in between, once the budget. You're getting ready for deliberative, for deliberative, but realistically, there's.
Maybe right after the deliberative session, would that be okay?
You could, I mean, in all fairness, your second meeting in January, you could probably have an, an initial discussion about it, and then maybe it quells your concerns, maybe it doesn't.
But then, but then it gets into territory of like, do we want to wait for new board members? No offense. Do you want?
Have we made, I just want to. Have a discussion about it, but if you're.
Really, you're only talking, well, I guess it's potentially two. But the flip side of that is, is understanding what I think Ellen's trying to reason for her timing. I think if you have a, a conversation in the middle of January, maybe there's merit to it. Maybe you say, you know what, I'm good. And then if it requires further discussion, realistically, it's probably a next board conversation in that case.
I think that's fair. And then you can put it, and we can put it off to new members too, if you, I mean, have that discussion, but then if you fail, decide how to proceed.
And one nice thing with that is you're actually pulling two separate boards in the same process, so you may get some feedback.
And then, and give the community if they want to weigh in or if they.
But you, you should have a theoretical historical slight lull at second meeting in January.
Yes, I, that's what I recall from last year, but.
Okay.
Everything is sort of a blur.
Mentioned it first, so the February seventeenth meeting.
Did all that work to get it in January? Thought we were friends, Ellen.
Okay.
Sleep deprived.
We are back to public comments.
Kevin Burville, Karen Miller, it's like, right, through who would ever, oh, like, challenge is, it's ESP two, it's optics, right? It, it didn't even get twenty percent. It didn't even get one-third what's required to pass. And it's the third time you've asked, right? We always get the same answer. The other thing I'll say is words used to do, some reason we, some of the words have gone away from them, is you have a vote whether or not to put something on the ballot. And then you have a second vote as to whether or not you recommend passage of that question from the voters, right? So you can, you can say, all right, I'll vote to put SB two back on the ballot, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend people vote against it, for, you know, whatever reason, you know, on, on any of those questions. So typically, it's two votes, right? One vote, yeah, we'll put it on the ballot, and then uh next is what each board member recommends. Earlier tonight, the speaker say that the high school is one line item, right? That's a little disingenuous, because that one line item has basically all the lines in your budget, but in someone else's budget. And if the problem is one line, and maybe it is, it's been one line for twenty years. For twenty years, our high school contract with Concord has been one line. Thank you so much for that presentation. I love stuff like that, which you probably don't, right, because I pump a lot of it out. Love stuff like that. That is really valuable stuff. It's really, for the, for the average person, they can really chew into it. What was interesting is, if I remember the numbers correctly, a high school is twenty percent of the budget, one-fifth, right? But if we use fifty kids per grade, high school students make up a quarter of our population, twenty-five percent. So it's a bigger population percentage than it is dollar percentage. So that's pretty good, right? I mean, to me, that, that looks like it's trending in the, the correct direction, even with the increases from school choice, so that's fun. I was gonna mention it last night, and I thought better of it. And um now, now I'm gonna, dad decided to say it. We often hear people say, we really need to get kids into public school. I, I don't, I don't say that. I'd say send kids wherever they want to go. It doesn't matter to me. I hear a lot of people say, we want kids in public schools, kids in public education. And look at what school choice has done for Deerfield. It has brought Deerfield kids back into the public education system. So anybody that said we should be trying to get kids into the public education system, this delivered on that promise, because we're bringing kids back into the public school system. So that should be a win-win-win from uh, from all sides, right? Thank you. Have a great, you guys are doing great work. Love it. It's like a breath of fresh air. Super wicked awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Nancy Shute Pleasant Hill wrote, um, I listened to the Select Board meeting when they were discussing the reasons for um, the increase in our taxes. And several speakers said they wished that they had had some kind of notification that it was coming. Um, I would suggest that, I mean, you as a board know that there will be another increase next December. Pretty likely, there's gonna be another increase. Um, you have the opportunity to get that information out sooner than later. And I would suggest get it out there as soon as you can, in any form that you can. I know the budget is in the red. Um, I still think a mailing of some sort needs to get out to residents, because not everybody does Facebook, not everybody does computers. Even if it's just a postcard that says, hey, look here for information. If you want a hard copy, contact so-and-so, we can give you a hard, hard copy. But you have the opportunity now to let people know what's gonna happen a year from now. And I think that would be really helpful to the community and to as a board that you're being upfront. Um, the other thing is that I recently read a post saying that the high school line. Um, the other thing is that I recently read a post saying that the high school line item did not have to be as large if the school board had gone with top-off agreements. Um, and that could be true, but I went back and reread Warren article. Shall the Deerfield School District enter into contracts and tuition agreements with more than one public high school for the purpose of accommodating high school choice? The Deerfield School Di- District will budget and pay for the full tuition of students to attend an approved public high school. That's what the community voted on. There was no talk of top-off agreements in the final warrant. Yes, there was tons of top beforehand, but in the warrant, um, there's no mention of it in that. So public servants are also accused of not listening to the voters. The school board has been accused of this often with the high school choice things. Looks to me like you did listen to the voters again. Um, when they do, they should be recognized for, um, doing so, just like they're called out when people believe they're not listening. So thank you for listening. You did what was listened, what people asked in Warren article. And have a great Thank you. Won't hear from me again till next year.
Just, I, oh, sorry, just one more thing, um, because we were talking a little bit about, um, the possibility of merging classes. I did want to point out, um, the class totals of kindergarten, and we did have a situation last year, I believe it was twenty-two to twenty-three, where we lost a kindergarten teacher. And, um, so they had up to, I believe it was twenty-four kids, um, in one of the classes or a couple of the classes. Um, so I certainly think it's doable, um, and I know that is a hard topic to discuss, um, but I, I did want to point that out, um. And I hope that it's discussed sooner rather than later, because I think that's gonna be beneficial, uh, the, the quicker we can get ahead of it and kind of make these changes, the better. Um, thank you guys. Great conversation, really great budget presentation. That was great.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anything for non-public?
Woo-hoo. I need these agreements though, we Yes. Those are for the high school?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so, can I move to adjourn?
I think I just did. I did it before you.
No, I didn't do you.
I said it, I said Merry Christmas, move to adjourn.
Oh, I didn't, I just
Helen listens to me.
Sounds like Ellen is seconding.
Like sitting at home with my wife and kids.
I have a second, I go did it?
Sorry.
Exactly.
I, well, all in favor?
I
Oh.
So much to say, I get a lot of money.
Too early for him.
It's gonna go home, no one's gonna open to me there.